Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. We have some warrants to read. I got it, I got it, thank you. Eighteen dash zero one zero dated eleven sixteen seventeen in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. Student activities eighteen dash zero one zero B L dated November sixteenth twenty-seventeen in the amount of five thousand seven hundred for a total of five thousand, sorry, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, fifty-nine dollars and sixty-five cents. And we do not have minutes, is that correct? Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to public participation. And this is the time in our meeting when we allow the public to come up and speak on something that is not already on our agenda. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Okay. We are going to move right into our number five presentation of our fiscal year seventeen annual, fiscal year seventeen annual audit.
David will just provide a brief introduction to this item.
So the next speaker is Richard Sullivan, CPA of Powers &amp; Sullivan, one of, I think it's fair to say, one of the leading municipal auditors in the state. Been doing this for many, many decades, right, Rich?
Pretty much, going on thirty years.
And I've had experience with, with the firm in my history and was pleasantly surprised to see that they were the auditors at, at Acton Boxborough. The audit was in process when I arrived. Claire was, was basically, it was Claire's audit year and she oversaw it from the standpoint of the district along with Tom and Wenshu from our office. And so I know Dick has, has notes to talk about the, the results.
Okay, thank you very much, and also thank you for moving me up on the agenda, I appreciate it. This is our second year of auditing the district and the first year is always toughest because a lot of stuff has to go on that you don't necessarily have to replicate, you have to review, but you don't have to replicate. I was concerned with the transition from Claire to Dave that this could also be a difficult year for the audit. And I can tell you that was not the case. Both Claire and Dave, not in the preliminary stuff, in the year end stuff, were very involved in the audit and their team, their accounting staff, especially Tom, stepped up really nicely to help us out and get through what we had to get through. A little bit about the timing of the audit, we, this year we were able to break it out into two sections. Last year we had to come in year, after year end and do everything. This year we break it out, we're in the prelim, we do things that aren't sensitive or date sensitive to June thirtieth, which means we can look at the budget, we can look at debt, we can look at OPEB, we can look at pension. We do our test of transactions, which includes the four basic cycles that you experience, the revenue cycle, the payroll cycle, the expenditure cycle, and also journal entries. We select at least twenty-five transactions from each one of those categories to determine if things are working the way they should be working. I can tell you the results of the testing was just fine. Authorizations were correct, appropriations were charged correctly, the approval process was sound, the warrant process was sound, we didn't have any issues relative to any of the transaction testing we did. The year end work commenced on August twenty-ninth. And I only mention that because it's, it's pretty significant if you can get the books closed in forty-five days or less. We usually receive the ledgers at least one week before that. And what that means is we take them in, we put it into our software, we basically get it all set and ready to go so the financial statements are almost done when we arrive in the field. So I think that's important for you to note from the standpoint of your accounting staff and how efficient they've been in trying to get things done to us in time. And also, I'll talk a little bit later about the accuracy of that. The business office as a whole was what I call audit-ready. And what that means is that Claire and David and Margaret and the rest of the team were focused and they exhibited a sense of urgency while we were here. And we were extremely responsive to our inquiries. The info we received was complete, accurate, and received in a timely manner. Because we do some things, there's about eighty percent of the job has to be, everything is always going to be the same. Cash has to be audited, receivables have to be audited, capital assets, your liabilities have to be audited. But each year we come in and ask for something we didn't ask the year before. And we measure the responsiveness and the accuracy of the information we get as whether or not we're going to have a lot of credibility in dealing with the team. They passed, so I was very happy about that. The, to give you an idea of what we audit, you do not have a complicated balance sheet and honestly, your revenue statement is not that complicated either. The biggest two assets you have on your balance sheet is cash, which is about sixteen million. You have about seventy-three million dollars in capital assets and then four big liability accounts. You have your bonds payable, just under thirteen, just under thirteen million, the OPEB liability account, which I talked about last year and I'm pretty sure everybody's familiar with, and also the pension liability. Those two are nineteen and twenty-seven million dollars individually. From a report standpoint, we issued drafts in August thirty-first of seventeen, which is a nice turnaround considering we started not too far from then. An intensive review of the reports was done by both Claire and David, and I appreciate that because it always, I think enhances the quality of the report, brings things to attention that we actually tweak a little bit, whether it be the M D N A, a reclassification of particular accounts, some additional footnote disclosures. Probably this account and maybe two others do the most work, others just accept what we give them. And I was very appreciative of the fact they spent the time to do it. Couple of long conference calls. The second draft was issued in October. And the reason there was a big gap is because the actuary had to get us some what we call GASB seventy-four information, I'll touch base on it a little later, and it relates to OPEB. And we didn't have it when we left the field, so we had to wait for it before we get the last draft out. Finals were issued in October, of, end of October. A little bit about the financial results. I kind of focus on the budgetary statements because that's basically how you run the district. There's a lot of other things in there, in fact, I think the report's about sixty pages long, that honestly, I'm not saying you don't pay attention to, but there's a lot of other things. The budget to actual statement is what you really pay attention to because it deals with the appropriation process. On a budget-wise, operations reported a profit of one point seven million dollars in two thousand seventeen. That's versus a profit of nine hundred and one thousand dollars in the previous year. The contributions to this profit were a little bit more on the expenditure side than the revenue side, but it was similar to what I'd seen previously. Revenues came in higher for two reasons. The Medicaid reimbursement has always come in higher than you expected, and that was two hundred and nine thousand dollars higher. And transportation money came in a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars more than budgeted. On the expense side, all of your categories pretty much were underspent and you spent eight hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars less. Now, I know that sounds like a lot of money, but that's just barely one percent of your budget, which means to me, you spent what you expected to spend and your appropriations were pretty sound. If you're willing to read this, the information is on page forty-eight and forty-nine of the financials, and I'm not suggesting, but I'm just, just making that point out. Then there's an area of the operations we call non-major governmental funds, and what those are is mostly your special revenues and your revolving accounts and things like that. There, there was no, no unusual transactions there, pretty much things came in as they were consistent with the prior year. From a capital asset activity perspective, you added five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in additions. The biggest thing was the concrete project at the high school, that was about three hundred and ninety-four, and the smattering of other stuff, you purchased some boilers, your security system upgrade, and I think you bought an AC compressor. The new GASB, two thousand seventeen was GASB seventy-four, needed to be implemented because you folks have an OPEB fund of which is two point nine million dollars in there, good for you. And it requires a whole bunch of additional disclosures when an entity has a OPEB trust. What it did is it basically said, we're going to report OPEB trust just like we report pension liability. And all the information relative to the liabilities and all the estimates and actual assumptions that are made relative to OPEB are now being presented fully in the, in the financial statements. Now, I talked about a nineteen million dollar liability on your balance sheet earlier. There's, the overall liability for OPEB is actually thirty-nine point seven million dollars. So the difference between the two is accounting for GASB forty-five and GASB seventy-four. Next year, GASB forty-five's going away and the thirty-nine point seven million dollars will be there. Just a little bit of footnote on this, it added four pages to the footnotes and four pages to what we call required supplementary information, which is why your report's over sixty pages long. Overall results of the audit, no adjustments required to the books, which is what you want to hear. What this means is, is that when you received information periodically or maybe every school committee meeting, I don't know how it worked, that information was accurate. There were no adjustments that were required to be made to the books to make the books equal what the financial statement should be. All we did was add adjustments to make it gap basis. The audit opinion is unqualified, which means it's a clean opinion, to layman's terms, it doesn't get better than that. If you read the opinion, it, we are all about negative insurance, we don't talk about good things, we just say there's no bad things. There's no issues related to report, related to internal controls. I think you should know that, as the governing body, that's important for you to know that the processes that you understand are going on are in fact working the way they should. And again, I'll mention, we had great cooperation with the staff. I really appreciate what they do in making our job easier. A couple of observations, I know there's a couple of things going on, I just wanted to mention three. You're considering, you know, I know you're considering some capital projects and that relates to the bond market. The bond market when it comes to regional school districts looks at a few things, and I'm just going to mention five. First of all, they look at the ratings of the communities that you're, are members of this district. Both of your communities are triple-A. That's a good thing. They also look at the individual rating of the district itself, which is A, A two, which is also a good rating. There, I've heard a lot of conversations with the Stans, Empores, and Moody's, and they want to know what's your plan for OPEB. Well, you already have one, which I think is great. You've, you've put a lot of money into it, and I think that's going to get you some credibility in the market, too. They also like to see how reserves are used and the re-establishment of them when you use them. You don't use a lot of your E and D for structural elements of your budget. You use it to maybe fund the one-time funding, but you don't necessarily say, I'm going to fund salaries with, with, with the stabilization fund, because when you do that, you're going to have to do it the next year, and the next year, and the next year. We call that a structural deficit, and that's what I see here. And also, policies and procedures relative to financial management. You have a lot of policies and procedures here. I know, I don't know what it was like before Claire came on, but when I was working with Claire, I saw a lot of things documented that I thought were strengthening the way things are done and, and also formalizing the way things are done, which I think is important to you so you know what's going on. Those are the five things for the bond rating agency. Just talk quickly about GASB seventy-five. I know this stuff sounds like gibberish, but what it's going to do is it's going to basically take between seventy-four and seventy-five and do make all the reporting for OPEB just like the pensions, which means in taking that nineteen one million, one point one million dollars off the balance sheet and putting on the thirty-nine point seven. It's not going to harm you in any way that I think with the bond companies, because they've already vetted this information. They know what it's all about, they've been looking at this for years. It's just starting to say, we're not going to bury this in the footnotes anymore, we're going to start putting it right in front of you and try to get people to deal with it. Pensions on one side, there's really no issue there for me, because by Mass General Law you have to fund them, all right? OPEB's the one that's at the local level that you have to manage, and that's the one that's going to be the toughest. Also, I just let, just let you know, in case you're wondering, in January, we'll be auditing the student activity accounts. Every three years, Masbro requires that they be audited, and we're going to take care of that in January after we get through our busy season, which we are up to here right now on. So that's my quick summary of the financial statements. You've got two other reports, one is the federal report, which you have to get, has to be done because you expend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grants. You spent a total of one point nine million dollars, which happens to be the exact same amount you spent in two thousand sixteen. We once again tested special education, it's called a CLUSTER, it's a number of grants that make up the special education group, and that was one point three million dollars. No findings, no question costs, there's three reports in there, all of them have clean opinions. Finally, there's a management letter. There's good news to report here, as I mentioned earlier, there's no internal control issues, and really, there's not a lot of meat in here. This is probably a five-page report, six-page report, I can't remember, but I will tell you this, we have clients with twenty-five page reports. The only thing that was unresolved here, from our standpoint, was fraud risk assessment, and that's kind of a difficult thing to do, where you have to go through all your different elements and try to get it. We talked with David and Claire, they're trying to come up with a plan to approach it. I get it that it's not done, it's just that it's something that we do believe after some of the things that happened in the market, and we realized the governing bodies are actually the ultimate responsibility for everything that goes on here, and they basically said, we can't say we didn't know that was going on anymore. And a fraud risk assessment identifies the things that, you identify the risk, you say, here's what we have in place to mitigate the risk, am I satisfied with that? If so, fine. It's just a risk tolerance tool for you to use. I didn't mention what was resolved, and that's improvements was made in the payroll process. There was a little systemic issue, I thought there was like a disconnect, as I would call it. There's been improvement in that area and there's going to be, I concede that there's going to be more improvement in that area. We recommended the capitalization threshold be risen, it was, and Margaret took care of a bunch of old outstanding checks that we thought were hanging around for too long. We introduced three more, mostly informational comments. Talked about the future GASB, which I've already hit on. We talked about the documentation of internal controls, and this is documentation of internal controls really relative to federal grants. This thing called Uniform Guidance came out last year, and Uniform Guidance said federal grants have to be, have to be documented in the COSO framework, which is what all the SEC clients use. It's called the Committee for Sponsoring Organizations of the Tredway Committee. I'm going to give David, I didn't do this yet, but I'm going to give David an example I saw that was excellent, that should make this a lot easier to implement. It's not meant to be implemented across the entire district because I think it would just cause too much of an issue, but it should be implemented for the management of federal grants. And finally, I'd like to see adoption of a cash investment policy. And what that means is, if a simple policy would be, okay, we're not going to restrict any investment in a particular bank, but that bank has to be rated green by Vera Bank Rating Service. It's a service that rates banks green, yellow, red. Or we won't invest more than five percent of their assets, or we won't invest more than fifty percent of our assets. Something like that, just says, we have a policy and here's how we're going to do it. I think if you work with Margaret, I think she might have had one when she worked at Boxborough. That is just something I'd like to see, because I don't like to see that comment there. And what it does, again, it just tells you how your money's being managed and how it's being protected, because the biggest asset you really have on that balance sheet, which has legs and liquidity, is cash. That does it. That's about, hopefully fifteen minutes, about two hundred and fifty hours worth of work.
Thank you very much. Other questions? Dennis?
Thank you for that. On the, so, just following up on the, the change in the GASB regarding OPEB. So if we, if we were to, had to make that change this year, that, that nineteen million would have been, would have been thirty-nine?
That's correct.
So that would have put us at a net position of about four or five million?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
Yeah, I know you're not.
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
So it would have put us at a net position of four or five million.
Right.
So what happens if we went in, if that forced it to the negative? Are you telling me that's not going to have a?
Do not worry about it. First of all, you are kind of in a negative. If you're looking at, are you looking at the report at all?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's a negative twenty-five, thirty-five million. And that's because of the OPEB and pension liability. I'm, I'm not concerned that these are negatives, because I know eventually the pension liability's going to go away and the OPEB liability we're managing. I guess the idea behind it is, if we were sticking our heads in the sand and not trying to pay attention to this stuff, that would be an issue, I think, with the, with the street.
But our net position, our net position still would have been positive, because it would still have been fifty-nine.
Oh, because of, that's because of your fixed assets.
Right, because of the fixed assets.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Really what the, the rating agency is doing, they're paying attention to the elements of that, but they're really looking at your, your general fund, mostly your general fund at a balance sheet, which is healthy as heck. You've got a solid four million dollars of unassigned fund balance, you've got six point nine million dollars in cash, and then again, looking at the OPEB trust, which at the end of the year, two point nine million dollars. That's pretty significant.
So in reality, then, then the GASB is just taking the worst news out of the notes and sticking it onto the, on the balance sheet?
Exactly. This information has always been in the financial statements, just different spots.
Thank you for such a clear summary. I just want to just publicly say, I think Claire Janot has served the district so well. From what I've, my interactions with Dave thus far, I have very high expectations of him and the whole department. I mean, they just do excellent work, and I'm so proud. So thank you.
I just have one question, because it talked about our payroll system, I guess. Are we up to date with how we record things? I mean, have we invested enough in, in a system where it's not so manual? It just, it read as if we're very manual.
I'm not sure I understand the basis of the question.
So in last year's management letter, there were some comments about payroll having some duplication between human resources and payroll, and so honestly, it is very manual, and we're working on that right now. We use paper time cards, and then we enter them into spreadsheets and into the system, but we're actually right in the process of making some changes that we think are going to streamline it quite a bit. We would love to move to an online time card system. It's a pretty big move that we just haven't sort of had the staff and the time to make happen, but we hope to. And we, we are in sort of a project plan mode of working in that direction. Not very many municipalities are there yet, and we're talking to some who are, and there are a few different systems and what they use. The, the things that big companies uses, use, excuse me, are probably a lot more money and a lot more of, than a municipality could do. So I don't know if, if Richard has, you know?
Well, one of the things that I was able to say that was resolved is you were able to take a lot of your people who are pay hourly, and you're able to upload them now into the, into the system via that Excel worksheet you were talking about.
Yeah.
That did not exist when we were doing the audit last year.
Yeah.
And when you think about the number of hourly employees, salary employees are just, they're salary, it's, you know, take whatever number of weeks or they've been decided to take as their paycheck, that's automatic. A lot of the manual work that I saw being done was for salary people. And they came up, I'm not, I don't know if it's the best solution, but they came up with a solution that streamlined it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For our next agenda item? For our next agenda item, we have a report from the high school, and Principal Larry Dory is here, along with Associate Principal Beth Baker, and?
Is that you, Tina?
Yes, Tina, sorry.
First, I'd like to thank you for having us here tonight. We are going to do a three-part presentation. The first part will cover the class sizes at the high school, we'll go from a historical perspective to class sizes this year. We're going to talk a little bit about factors that affect class size. I'm going to talk a little bit about our scheduling pilot, which is scheduled to happen in March, the week of March twelfth and March nineteenth. And I have a model of that, and I'll just explain that to you, go over that briefly. Beth Baker's going to talk about our two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school improvement goals, which includes assessment work and student wellness. At this time, I'd like to ask Tina to come up and talk a little bit about our current class sizes. Thank you.
Thanks. Perfect. Yep, perfect. Hi. Bring the mic up a bit closer. Turn it down, there we go. Let me do that, perfect for my height. We begin with a historical and current look at average class sizes at the high school. This table includes class size average by department on October one from two thousand thirteen to this fall. Each year shows the number of students served and the number of sections and average class size by department. This fall, with over eighteen hundred students, eighteen hundred and thirty, class sizes have remained steady with twenty point nine six students as our overall class size average. Over a six-year period, period in the chart at the bottom, we see that we have moved slowly from an average of twenty-two students per class to an average of twenty-one students per class. This table is a summary of a much more detailed report in your packet, which provides class size averages course by course for each academic department from two thousand twelve to the In addition to class size averages, we also track class size ranges. In this table, we can look across each year to see the number of sections in each class size range. For instance, this year, a hundred and twelve of our sections, or twenty-six percent of our sections, have fewer than nineteen students. Twenty-eight percent have between nineteen and twenty-one students, and twenty-five percent have between twenty-two and twenty-four students. Together, this comes out to seventy-nine percent, close to eighty percent, of our core academic classes have fewer than twenty-five students. These numbers have been fairly consistent over the last four years. Looking a little more deeply into class size range, we break the class sizes down by department. In these charts, the horizontal axis is the class size, and the vertical axis represents the number of sections. Each department maintains the vast majority of classes in the sixteen to twenty-five range, as you can see. For English, Social Studies, and Math, the twenty-one to twenty-five range is most common. For World Language, the number of sections with sixteen to twenty and twenty-one to twenty-five students is almost equal, and the Science Department has more classes in the smaller sixteen to twenty range. We also look at class size outliers. In each of the departments, the smallest class sizes are the intermediate level classes such as our College Prep One and our foundation level classes. In the Math Department, for instance, the larger sections that we see are our Advanced Placement classes such as B C Calculus and Advanced Placement Statistics. And the smaller sections are our Elementary Algebra, Foundations of Algebra, and Geometry College Prep One classes. This priority to have smaller classes at the intermediate levels is part of what guides our scheduling process. This table shows the distribution of class size on October one this year among the various course levels within each department. In the column showing all departments, that first column, we see that the Honors and Advanced Placement courses average twenty-five students per class, our Accelerated and Enriched classes average twenty-two students per class, College Prep classes average nineteen students, and our College Prep One classes average twelve students. This pattern holds across all the departments with some small fluctuations caused by student course changes in the first few weeks of school. And then finally, within the larger picture of class size at the high school, it's also helpful to consider our elective classes. Part of meeting the needs of our student body includes offering a variety of electives outside of the core academic courses. This year, we have over a hundred sections of elective courses ranging from alternate day or everyday semester classes such as photography, musical theater, dance, and woodwork tech, to everyday full-year classes such as band, string orchestra, and drawing and painting. In electives, the average class size is fourteen students, and ninety-one percent of the elective sections have fewer than twenty-five students. So that's a quick overview of our current class sizes at the high school. I'm glad to take questions at any point. I'll hand this over to Larry now, who'll discuss some of the factors that affect class size throughout the school year.
This might, actually might be a nice break to take some questions regarding this, this portion and this information while, while we're here. Do you have any questions?
Just one, thanks very much. I noticed on one of the math charts, it looked like there was something that was between forty and forty-five students. I'm just wondering what that was.
Right, that's our B C Calculus class, that's Advanced Placement, it's basically a college-level course, and we run only one section of it a year, and that has that number of students, yes. It's run by Bill Knoweth, our legendary math department.
But I guess that, so it, it, the one thing that concerns me is, there's an unbelievable amount of stress at that level, right? And to have a class size that large, I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, what, that's a very high student. I don't, I don't know, I mean, what, that's a very high student-to-teacher ratio. And I, I mean, I'm just trying to understand how those students get supported because we expect a lot in those, in those high-range classes because they don't get as much help in general, but it just seems, you know, I, I understand it's a college-level course, but it just feels like they're still not in college to be treated late college. Do you understand?
That's a great question. We've, we've always had three to four, what we call lecturer-based AP courses at the high school. We had AP Psychology that ran for years. That was taught in our lecture hall and that was sometimes as large as 50, 60 students taught by Pam Lynn. Our B.C. Calculus course will vary year to year. Last year, I, 30, we were, we were in the low 30s. This year, we happen to be up in the higher, higher 40s. It, it, it might be a good question for Bill Noeth, why he chooses to keep this group as large as he does. He, he is very effective in working with this group and in the class, you know, as the scores and the performance has shown, it, it works. I don't have an answer why we wouldn't split it into two sections, other than we are devoting much of our resources to some of the more remedial sections.
And I mean, and again, you're going to get a high-level performance at that level, you know, that's just the type of student that that is, but it's a very high-stress level for, for that level. And I just don't know if maybe we use like a TA approach or something. I mean, seeing scores that are great, that, that's one thing, but I don't know if we have done any evaluation of the stress level of those students. Just, you know, when you get to the higher-level classes, there's just a higher stress level, you know, and that's, that's where a lot of the anxiety and stress is going to come in. And we have to figure out some way to just get, you know, a TA or whatever.
I hear your point.
So I just wanted to follow up on that. And because I, I didn't, I don't know if this is typical or an anomaly. And I, I trust Bill to handle, if he says he can handle it, he can handle it, but I also want to make sure Bill understands that, hey, if he needs some help, he's got support, so.
Yeah, Bill's, he, he's very good at, at what he does. He's been, as I said, very effective working with these students, with these class sizes. I think if he thought that those resources would help, he would get those resources. And in the, in the past, Bill probably has used students to work with students in, in the classroom. But, thank you. Okay? Okay, thank you. So, you know, we talk about class averages at, at the high school and they, they certainly mean one thing, but when you look at the numbers, you, you can always see there's a range in, in class sizes. And there's a number of reasons why we, why we do range in our class size and a lot of it's based on the, the way we schedule, the students, our philosophy around scheduling students, and also the way we run our lunches. And I can talk a little bit more about that. I just want to talk a moment about the scheduling process. We start the scheduling process in February and, and that's simply, you know, working with students, getting our, our program of studies out, making sure students understand courses, students communicate with, with teachers around levels, and they think about electives and what have you. And then it's getting all those courses to us, where we can start to look at the information, we can start to make assignments of teachers and set sections and, and work in those areas. Once we put the schedule together, we start to think about some very important pieces. And balanced class size is, is a huge piece to us. We want light classes to be very close in size. It's what's equitable, it's what works for students, it's what's fair for teachers as well. We do, as I said, we aim for smaller class sizes at the intermediate levels whenever possible. We do look at the size of each teaching load and we work at balancing those teaching loads. And then one thing that, you know, I, I pride ourselves in our scheduling is we typically are able to schedule 100% of the requests for approximately 85% of the students. And in the scheduling world, those numbers are very, very strong. So when students put in their requests, we're usually able to build a schedule for you. I want to say this now because I don't want to forget to say it. One of the best things about becoming principal for the year was that I don't have to do the scheduling any longer. And Tina has taken on the scheduling and she's, she's better than I am. She's, she's amazing. And we, you know, we continue to hit these numbers based on the type of schedule that we have and the, and the hard work that goes into, to planning it. And I want to again publicly thank her for all the work that she's done because she picked that up very late in the year. She, she always has my back. She, she always has my back. So let me get, get caught up here just a second. So I talked about the factors that affect class size and, and as I said, a number of them, I think are, are, it's our philosophy around how we work with kids, it's our philosophy with how we work with, with parents, and it's a testament to the, the flexibility that, that we have and how we try to accommodate things. So I'm going to, I'm just going to share, share some numbers with you. We build a schedule that comes out in August and as I said, classes are almost balanced, almost perfectly. One to, one to two students more in one class to the, to the, to the next class. We really, Power Schedule's a wonderful piece of software. It does a great job doing that. And as I said, Tina does as well. After those schedules go out, we have what's called an appeals process. And an appeals process allows a student and a family to take a look at a schedule and take a look at the order of the courses, the number of the courses that the students be required to take, the teachers that they're, they're given, and under certain guidelines and specifics, make an appeal to change your schedule. We don't want students to have to take five courses in a row if they don't choose to. So they can appeal that and we will rearrange that schedule. We will allow students with good reason to change a teacher if they've had that teacher in the past. So that's an appeals that might come in. We'll get appeals around balancing first semester and second semester courses and things like that. So during that appeals process that takes place in August, we do 375 changes. So that starts to impact the balance of, of those courses and what we talked about. School stats on September 5th, students have their finalized, that's half a quote, finalized schedule. October 1, we will do, between September 5th, the start of the school year and October 1, we'll do, we did 709 changes for 450 students. That impacts the balance. October 2nd to October 31, 577 changes for 333 students. Now, in many of those cases, we could say no. In many of those cases, we could say, we're not going to put another student in the, in that classroom. And, you know, when you, when you take that line, it, it becomes a very difficult thing to work with students, to work with families and find solutions and make sure students are comfortable. So we are very, although we're thoughtful and we have a process, we do end up accommodating a lot of requests around changes and those requests do impact the class range. And that's one of the biggest pieces that you'll see. This graph up here is, is sort of just some information or some evidence of the changes that I'm talking about. And what you have here are three different courses, two maths, geometry, algebra, and a physics course. And you can look at the 2016 enrollment sizes and then you can look at the 2017 June enrollment sizes, so the start of the school year to the end of the school year. And you, and you can look at a course, Algebra II Honors and you can see we started the year, we made a prediction that there, there were 91 students enrolled. We were going to have X number of sections that would create a class size of 30. By the time we get to the end of the year, there's 76 students enrolled and the class average is 25. In order to accomplish this successfully, we have to make predictions every year about the, the amount of movement that's going to occur. Our department leaders are pretty adept at doing that, but it's tricky. And that's again where, you know, if, if a student comes home and says, you know, there's 28 students in the classroom, that wasn't by design. When the school year started, that average might have been 25, it might have been 24. But because we have these changes that occur in, in levels and for other reasons, you, you can see a significant shift in, in class size as the year progresses. It works. It seems to work every, every year and, but it does, it does impact. There's, there's no question about it. The other factor that affects class size, and this has been the case since we went to an eight-period day and a, a four-period lunch is, is the room availability. When you have lunches offered during a class period, four, five, six, or seven, you're going to have approximately 500 students, okay, that are going to be scheduled for lunch that period. That means there's going to be a lot of rooms available at that time. That means sections are going to go in at that time. When you look at the number of rooms that are available periods, one, two, three, and eight, you can see we're almost at cap capacity. Okay? What happens to those earlier periods, those non-lunch periods, is they tend to grow in number faster than the, the classes where we have more sections during, during the lunch period. And that's also a challenge that we work with and that also creates some of that range that you'll, you'll see in class size. Any questions about the range in class size and the reasons? Sure?
I, I think I've asked this each year. Do we do any evaluation of how many kids who bypass the recommended class and then, you know, so they appeal, they take the higher class and then they drop down?
Yes.
So what percentage are actually dropping back down?
I don't have the percentages right now with me, but we, we do have that information. Yeah. And, you know, if you're talking about students that, are you talking about overrides?
Yeah, overrides.
You know, I, I think if you go over the years and look depending on the number of overrides students do and various factors, approximately over 60% of our students are successful in their overrides. So...
So we're comfortable with as many students that we let override?
It's tricky. You know, it's tricky. It's not just, it's, it's, you know, are you going to do one override? Are you going to do three overrides? What other courses are you taking? What other things are you doing in your life? How much time do you have to devote to your academics? So an override isn't necessarily a bad thing for a lot of things. It's, it, for a lot of reasons, it's good. It gives a chance for students to stretch themselves, to challenge themselves. But if it's a blanket, I'm going to override five recommendations or whatever it may be, that's where we have problems. But on average, about 60% of the students, at least 60% are successful when they, when they do an override.
So the number of appeals in the, in the, in the follow-up, I'm trying to find the page here. Yeah, the course changes, that seems like a lot. Isn't that a lot?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We're very friendly at the high school. We're very accommodating. And, and we, we think through each one very carefully. We, we have a process where students need to go to their counselors, they need to go to their parents, they need to go to their department leaders. And there are ones that we, we simply don't approve. And there are subject areas where there are actually grade requirements before a student can do, do an override in some areas as well. Which, which... We have some frequent flyers, yes. Yeah.
So, follow up question by name. So all the data that you presented before, I thought I heard was based on October 1st? Oh, I'm sorry. If, if I remember correctly, all the data that had been presented before about class size, that's based on October 1st data?
Right.
Okay. So that's not necessarily exactly what is happening throughout the rest of the year.
Absolutely. I think the last graph I showed, where you, you saw a lot more movement during the years, that happens throughout the year. Schedules will continue to change. Students will, will work very hard for a term, sometimes two terms, and if it's not working out, they will switch a level. So that, that continues to change throughout the year.
So in some of the, well, most of the charts you had, you had for English or, or any of the other subjects you had, Honors, AE, CP. So most cases were, we're looking at three different levels. And I would imagine it's easier to schedule and get if there was two levels, correct?
Would it be easy to schedule if there were two levels?
Yeah, as opposed to three.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess it would be, yes. Yeah, it would be simpler.
And if it's easier to schedule, then it would probably be easier to, to maintain a some sort of, semblance of a, the class size you wanted. So I guess my question is, you know, if I talk to other people that I know that do not live and act in a box borough, generally their, their schools have, they don't have AE. So what does AE buy us?
I, I think when you look at some of the larger schools, you will find that they, that there are three levels. And oftentimes, it's an honors level and two levels of college prep or whatever, whatever you call it. But many of the larger schools do have three levels. We have some two-level courses that work very well. For example, Grade 9 English, we have English I and we have Honors English. So we're, we're combining those two levels. We go back to Senior English and we do that as well. Next year, we're going to explore World History as a possibility to do, to do that again. What do three levels buy us? I think when you have that, that many students, in order to provide the type of college prep curriculum that we want to provide for every student, prepare, prepare every student for, for college, we, we, we do have to differentiate at that, at those three levels.
Can I follow up? So, okay, so you're telling me that colleges recognize AE as a, as a specific level, as a higher level than CP and that's...
Absolutely.
...differently?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, many, many colleges do. They, they, they look at our profile and all schools' profiles and, and they know there is a, a difference between the honors levels, the AE levels and the college prep levels. Most colleges also calculate their own, their own GPA, so they, they have their own system to convert. It's not true of all colleges. For example, many of the state schools will only look at honors courses and then all other courses. But most of the private schools are looking at, at all three levels of rigor.
So they'll look at it from a weighted perspective or are they looking at it...
They weight it their own way, but yes, they look at it as three different, three different courses.
Well, I just want to make one comment because it always sounds like I'm hammering you, but one, I do, I do think the three levels help just, I, I keep going back to the stress level because there's a great deal of competition that goes on in these classes. And at least you're, you're trying to segregate it out so that if, if you had two levels, it feels like kids who are just kind of making it in that level and kids who are way at the top of that level, those kids who just kind of made it in there might be being pushed a little bit too hard. Do you know what I mean? Because it, the, the range of, of students that might be in that class might, might be overwhelming, just, just from what I've seen with, within the levels of AE, honors, and, and CP. But I, I did want to just at least say, I think, you know, I, we even participate in that appeal process and I think you do a great job with evaluating and really trying to... process, and I think you do a great job with evaluating and really trying to find out the reasons why, like the questions that seem to be asked in those appeal requests seem to be spot-on of trying to make sure that you're, that the student wants it. My fear is, as well, though, is you still get, and I think that's just where we live right now, but you still get that push to try and go a little bit too hard, and I don't know what the solution is for that, but I think you guys have a great process going.
Yeah, that's accurate.
I was just going to say, I just wonder if the A E, if the A E level is there to benefit the students, or is there to satisfy the parents? That's all.
Well, you know, I could, I could... They're very different courses in many cases.
I mean, I would just say, as a personal example, I taught the ninth grade, I taught the ninth grade unleveled class, and I've also taught at the junior honors level. So I've had experience doing both the unleveled and the leveled, and it is, it did feel significantly different as a teacher, and I think it felt significantly different for my students. So, the amount of differentiation that, I spent a lot of my time in that ninth grade level, really focused on differentiation, which I did also at the honors level, but it looked, but it was a very different kind of differentiation. Whereas in the honors level, like, I was differentiating for individual kids, but certainly, it was about how am I pushing them, you know, in terms of their honors-level junior thinking, potentially going into A P, and at that point in their career, really specializing. And certainly, when we switched to the unleveled senior English, we had a lot of growing pains, and I think that we have figured out what that looks like now, and they're doing that very well. But when we put those two groups together, we had to do a lot of work in finding that sweet, that sweet spot, and I think because of the way the senior curriculum is, where it's topic-based, we've been able to make it work. And I think there's also something special about ninth grade that we're able to make that, make that work. And for any of those of you who've had ninth graders, ninth through twelve, they're very different in ninth-grade students. Something happens between ninth and tenth, I think, in terms of brain development and specializing, and so I think it is a time where we're able to do that unleveled class in a way that is, I think, much more difficult for students. But these are, this is not a simple answer. This is something we talk about at the leadership table a lot, especially that A E level. But I think it's a challenging course that kids can do some reach work who might not otherwise be able to do that.
Okay. You're probably not going to be able to see this very well, because I can't either, and I'm right up here, but this is a model of our two-week pilot schedule. Little history on it, we've been working, looking at our schedule for the last two years. We've done a number of research of surrounding schools and their schedules. We've looked at a lot of different models. We've done a lot of different surveys. Based on the information that we had, we came together as a community and talked about what type of schedule would it make sense for us to try? And we didn't have a whole lot of agreement, so what we came up with is a schedule that almost includes a lot of different things, and that's what this schedule does. This is going to give us an opportunity to experience an eighty-seven-minute period. It's going to give students an opportunity to experience just having four periods in one day and seeing what it feels like not to have as much work in those other subjects those nights. It's going to give us an opportunity to create what we are calling now a wellness block. It's called a flex blocks in many schools, it's called an X-block, but it's a block where we can really try to get down to some of the things that we're trying to do in advisory, some of the things we're trying to do in wellness, where we can bring in speakers and talk with students and what have you. So, it is structured time, but it's not classroom time, and this would occur once a week with this schedule. So this schedule that we came up with, and this isn't by no means the schedule that we say we're going to do, I think you should be aware that the schedule will not change next year, and we have a lot more work to do before we're ready to talk about changing the schedule. But it is a focus of this year's professional development. Beth is doing a lot of work on wrapping our professional learning around some of the aspects of this particular type of pilot. So anyways, if you look at, and this pilot also needed to fit into an eight-period day this year. That's something that would be, you know, off the table if we were looking at a different schedule. We might be able to look at a seven-period or what have you. But the reality is, we have eight periods in the schedule, and that's how this pilot was built. So, we have Monday, Tuesday, and Friday, if you can see up at the top, and you probably can't, but it's first, second, and the fifth day. Monday, Tuesday, and Friday is essentially the same schedule we have right now, same exact schedule we have right now. What we've done on Wednesday is we've created four eighty-seven-minute periods, probably be periods one, three, five, and seven. And on Thursday, we've created four seventy-four-minute periods. And the reason why the Thursday periods are seventy-four minutes and not eighty-seven minutes is because after we complete periods two, four, six, and eight, we're going to use our wellness block and go through that particular pilot experience at that time. Some of the things we hope to do with the wellness block, as I said, I think Beth's going to talk a little bit about it in a moment, but we have teachers preparing to teach long blocks. We have counselors and nurses and administrators and people working around wellness areas working to prepare the X-block. Our goal is to have the best pilot that we can have this year, and then have an opportunity to assess how it went, determine what we like, what we don't like, talk some more about what we have and other things that are available out there, and then make some decisions next year about where we'd go as a school, school community. Any questions around that? Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask Beth to speak on our school improvement goals right now. Thank you.
So, I'm just going to take a few minutes to talk about what our school improvement goals are and where we're at with them at this point in the year. I do, I've talked about our goals in a couple of different venues this year, and I do really like to always start off with our driving question, because that has been sort of the heart of our work over the past five years, and I think it's been very helpful for us as a staff to have this question in our mind with all the work we do. So, our question is, it's had some, you know, revision over the past five years, but it still remains at the heart, pretty similar. How can staff, students, and families support wellness and balance within a rich learning environment that provides opportunities for all students to experience success? And I think the things that are really important to us about that question this year are this idea of staff, students, and families supporting this work. Our question used to simply read "we," which I think tended to put the onus on the staff, and we have lots of work to do and that we want to do, but I think it's important that we're always, even in our driving question, in partnership with staff and students. And then really, this idea of all students experiencing success, so that we're not just thinking about one level or the other, but how we're bringing success to all students, and also recognizing that that success is not always academically focused either. We have students who have passions in many different areas, so those are, I just, I like to start with that, because it helps focus me. Our first goal this year is around classroom instruction. It reads like this. "We will continue our work towards developing common language and expectations for assessment across the high school. This include that it be a reasonable amount, that we consider the scheduling of assessments, that assessments are thoughtfully relevant and authentic, and that assessments directly reflect the objectives of a course, unit, or lesson." We began the arc of our professional learning work around assessment last year, after having closely looked at homework and workload and hearing from students some real concerns around stress related to assessment. We all know there's good stress and bad stress, and that the good stress really drives us to be better and learn, but we also know that there is bad stress that just shuts us down. And we're trying to look at assessment in broader ways to think about not just how that might relieve stress, but also how that might expand what we do as students and how we think about learning. So, our professional learning this year is largely focused around that, looking at different types of assessment, including formative assessment, alternative assessment, project-based learning, and also thinking about how that ties into a possible schedule change and working towards this pilot, right? So if we have these longer class periods a couple of times a week, how can we expand our notion of assessment? And what does that afford us? And I think that's the question that I have asked staff, and staff have been asking each other over the past few years, is what can that afford us, a different schedule in terms of learning and teaching differently? So, we began the year doing cross-disciplinary work around the variety of assessment, instruction, and engagement techniques used in all classes. We looked at different terms like project-based learning, authentic assessment, formative assessment, because these are, you know, fairly ed-speaky terms that sometimes people don't always mean the same thing. So we tried to do some calibration with the staff around that, and then asked staff to really think about what those different things looked like, looked like in their department, so staff could see all the different ways that that already looks in the school, and we could see who amongst us have some expertise in those different areas already. We followed that by some work around brain research related to learning, related to assessment, particularly related to engagement and how we use time, right? Especially when we're thinking about longer chunks of time. And one of the things we looked at that I thought is really important is this idea of, it's called primetime and downtime, right? And so, when are students most able to hear information, and when do they, and when do they need to process that? And what we looked at is, it really is, there's an ebb and a flow in a class, and you can't just go after information for forty minutes and expect students to just absorb that in. This sounds like common sense, but it's something we especially need to think about if we're thinking about a longer chunk of time. And then, we followed that with some work that we did this November Professional Learning Day. I've been here for a long time, and this was honestly one of the most exciting days that I've seen professionally at the high school. So, the morning was spent with colleague-led workshops around assessment, instruction, engagement. And this has been the planning since last spring. We have a committee at the school, of teachers from across the school have been looking at assessment work particularly, and teachers signed up for workshops, ran workshops. We partnered teachers who were from different departments to lead things on inquiry-based learning, revision and redemption, questioning strategies. Teachers could go to, went to two sessions each, and it wasn't just us teaching sessions, but we made sure all sessions had time for people who were there to talk about their practices in these areas, and also to think about some planning in these areas. And asked teachers to really think also about the pilot, right? What are some things that you can try in the pilot to really be able to see, again, what might be afforded to you using this different schedule, and whether there are some things we can tweak in terms of particular assessment with that kind of time. Will, department leaders will also be leading professional learning this year specifically related to their goals, and each department has different goals related to this arc of assessment work. World Language has been focusing for the past several years on proficiency-related work, which is very exciting and very project-based. English is concentrating very much on the idea of reader engagement, and particularly, again, how that lengthier time might, how they might be able to rearrange classes in ways that promote more independent types of reader engagement. And one of the things that math is looking at, among many other things, is this idea of revision and redemption, which is so, I mean, is just so exciting to see them take that on. And that was one of the sessions I went to in November, was one of our math teachers talking about ways that they're thinking about doing this this year and already implementing it right now. So, just very exciting to see them leading that, and I'm going to be really interested to see how this work looks when it's, the department's focusing during their professional learning on that time. So, that's what the arc of the work is looking like this year around this assessment work. Our second goal is related to student wellness. We've had a student wellness goal now for several years. This specifically centers on providing some more opportunities during the day for this work. So we'll put our students' well-being at the center of teaching and learning and build opportunities for mindfulness and wellness into our school structure. Before I talk about what the work looks like this year, I'm just going to share one piece of data, which I think is very exciting. So we do a very extensive survey of our staff every year at the end of the year, and so for the past two years, we've been asking about this wellness question and how teachers feel about the wellness work and whether they think that that's something that we need to continue focusing on. And it's over ninety percent of the teachers for two years in a row have said, yes, we need to continue thinking about this very specific area of student wellness linked to overall wellness and balance. And that's the type of wellness that we're talking about here, is really this idea of overall wellness and balance. So, the sort of center of this work this year is what we're calling the A B Because You Matter Campaign, which was born out of a generous grant from the Act in Boxborough United Way. A steering committee of students, staff, and community partners came together last year to write this, to write this grant, which we were so happy to receive, and it's allowed us to do some things this year that we haven't been able to do in the past. So we began the year by giving out what we called Wellness Planners and swag bags to our two thousand students. We designed these planners on our own, and they are truly wellness planners. There are lesson plans in there related to topics linked to wellness, like mindfulness, balance, sleep, play, and there are places to set goals specifically related to wellness. There are places to reflect on your month related to the monthly topics. There are inspirational quotes on every page related to the topic of the month, so really trying to give something to students that not only was symbolic of what we want them to be thinking about, but could be actionable, that they could actually use, and hopefully use in their classes, and very specifically in advisory. We are also hosting monthly lunchtime workshops. We have a topic each month. Students helped us pick the topics. We began with mindfulness, followed that with life balance. We just did our sleep workshop today. They occur during all lunches, four through seven, once a month. We provide lunch. The first three workshops have been completely done with in-house staff, and that's been really exciting, because we have people volunteer. So we've had teachers, nurses, counselors, all volunteer to help lead these workshops. Students get to learn a little, they get to play a little, and they get to talk a little about what these things look like in their own life, and we get to eat some lunch When we envisioned this, how this would look this year, what, one of the things that was really important to us is that it wasn't just a standalone, but it was tying directly to advisory, and it was also pulling and tying to the community. So, each month, we're asking advisory teachers to teach one lesson related to the topic of the month. Those lessons are provided for them in the planner. They can also work on goal-setting or the reflections that are also found in the planner, so we're trying to both ask them to do something, but give them the resources with which they can do that. We had a wellness week last year to begin to introduce this idea. We'll have another one this year. Wellness week last year was largely led by students. So, for example, the, our ambassadors led a day on play, our wellness club led a day on mindfulness, so it really was driven by the students, what the topics were, and what the programming was around that, but we helped them with any supplies they might want to use for that day. We've been working very closely with Danny's Place United. Cindy McCarthy is on our steering committee, and so the workshops that are going on for students in the community at Danny's Place are around the same topic that we're doing every month, so trying to help each other in that way as well. And then, one of the most exciting things I think we saw last year with students, it was a very hard year, but we saw students really want to do a lot of work in the school. And our... And our clubs really stepped forward to do work in the school, whether it was pop-ups or opening doors or this Wellness Week. And so, we've been trying to encourage clubs to have that same kind of active spirit, and asking them if they want to help plan workshops, if they want to lead workshops, or if they want to do, you know, concurrent activities that link to the topics of the month. So, any questions?
I just want to say I'm so impressed, and thank you. I am a million years ago graduate of AB, and I said I would absolutely never, ever, ever move back here, because I hated every part of seventh through 12th grade, except for some choice teachers who were amazing. And I just, I'm really, I don't have a high school yet, I have a junior high student, and I just have to say how impressed, how thoughtful all of this is, and how much more of an experience it at least sounds like it was for me at the time, which, like I said, I had some wonderful teachers that, you know, brought the subjects to life and everything, but it sounds so much more cohesive now, and the work that's gone into it and working together. And I think we tend to hear lots of negative things in the community, and this is so much positive. I think these students sound, it sounds like it's a great place to be. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, by the way. That was an excellent presentation. You listed two goals, classroom instruction, school and student wellness. And then, in your presentation, you noted that student wellness was a goal last year.
Yep.
Okay. So, what, how do you measure last year to this year if you were successful on your student wellness? And then, if somebody's sitting here next year, and they say to you, how'd you do against your goal this year? What do you, what's your measurement component?
This is a good question. So, there's a number of things we look at. We do a senior survey every year, and we ask lots of questions about wellness, and we specifically try to ask about initiatives that we've taken on, like homework-free weekends. This year, there'll be lots of questions about specifically the planners and the lunchtime workshops. And seniors enjoy taking the survey very much. There's a lot of thought put into it. I mean, like, you know, it's in the spring, and I think they feel like this is their moment to tell us the good and the bad. We also do, like I said, this faculty survey. We use data from things like the Challenge Success Survey, and we've given some of our own internal surveys. That's how we started this work a few years ago, asking some very specific questions about workload and stress. And we've been talking about what other kinds of surveys we might, questions we might need to ask that help us target those answers around stress. So there's always multiple data sources that were given, some that are driven, written specifically from the school, and others that are larger, more district-level surveys. But we're always really trying to pinpoint what are the initiatives that we're getting. And so, I mean, that's the data largely that we look at. And then, I think this year, we're in our cycle for the, and I always get the name wrong, because I've worked in a couple of different states.
Youth Risk.
Thank you. The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which gives us significant data about wellness, some of which relates directly to this kind of work, and some of it is about more acute wellness.
To follow up, my suggestion in the future, because there will be people watching this, there'll be people sitting here, there'll be people will be back next year listening to these things. It's good to, I mean, it's great to have your goals. It's also, it's also very good for someone that's part of the community, might not necessarily hear it the way we do, but someone that's part of the community that understands that. You've looked at it, and you think you're here. You put a plan in place, and it sounds like everything that you're doing this year really is guided towards making, expanding on that goal and accomplishing something positive. But there's really got to be a measurement component.
Yep.
Because there are certain people that'll be out there, be like, what's it going to do?
They want to see the numbers.
Right. And whether it's a number, whether it's an accomplishment, whether it's a, whether you can show people you're moving the needle, I think that just builds credibility in every single thing that you're going to do going forward. But your presentation was very good.
No, that absolutely makes sense.
So, it's great to sit here and hear the enthusiasm that you have, and that obviously others on the staff have for the professional learning, and it's great to see that going on. So thanks for sharing that excitement. One question, and this kind of goes to class size and overriding and student stress and everything, but has there been any discussion, or maybe it's already in place and I just don't know about it, about limiting the number of AP courses that any one student can take?
There is often that discussion.
Does it go anywhere? I mean, is it, does it have any traction? I'm just curious, because, you know, you hear about kids, and I talk, my kids are now out of high school, thank you. I'm so glad they're out of high school, because it's very stressful.
Yep.
And you hear about these kids that are in five AP classes. It's crazy.
Are you moving to the mic?
I should like to stand. Do you want to stand?
And, you know, it's, I get it, it's controversial, because, you know.
It's something we talk about certainly as a leadership team.
And you've got parents pushing, you know, and colleges saying they want to see AP courses, but we've got all these levels, for heaven's sakes. So I just wonder about that.
It's, there's two parts to this, as we start to look at, you know, the possibility of changing the schedule and ways of looking at reducing stress, structurally, what we do in the school, to try to make the school day a little bit easier, you know, communication, how can we reduce workloads and what have you? And then, there's the piece that equally occurs in conversations at home, and, you know, decisions that students have to make. We could certainly decide that we're going to impose a limit on the number of AP courses. I don't know how that would be received by the community, but, you know, that's the other side of this, as we look at the schedule, you know, and what we change physically with the schedule, what do, you know, what do we, what is the student going to give up? And, you know, how are we going to come together on that? Because we can, you know, we can come up with all sorts of schedules that give students more transitions, more breaks in the day, you know, the ability to drop a course during the week and not have that homework from there. But if they just continue to take the six AP courses, or whatever it may be, unless we put a lid on it. So it is part of our discussions, and our leadership team talks about it quite often.
First, I want to say thank you to you and others who were involved in writing the grant to get this, and to our community partners, Acton-Boxborough United Way and Danny's Place for funding it and supporting it. It's fabulous. I do want to ask, I love the concept of the planner, and I see the planner on my dining room table every night, so that's fabulous. It's being used, that you kind of have planned the year to build this in. I wonder, though, is there room for flexibility? So, as a perfect example, the terrible incidence of the racial intolerance, that is absolutely something that needs to be addressed, and I wonder, can you fit that in when you already have things already planned out?
In advisory, yes. So, we don't have, and we never would plan out what the advisory lessons look like from September to June. It's not, it's not, the goal of advisory was really about making it smaller and building a small community for kids and a staff member who is not responsible for grading them, right? And building that relationship with someone in the building. So part of the reason why we would never impose tons of plans throughout the year is we want the teacher and the kids to be able to develop that community together. You know, my group, we start, I have ninth graders, we start with highs and lows, that's really important to me. It's a silly little activity, but it's, you know, it's getting some traction, and I think it's important that I am able to do that. We have already done some advisory lessons targeted at the events that you're speaking of, and we'll continue to. So that's one of the conversations we've been having, is how we do that more. We want to do it really thoughtfully and planfully. And again, make sure, kind of like I think I was alluding to with these wellness lessons, make sure that teachers have the support that they need to do lessons that we think are important. So yes, there's plenty of room, but we also want, and so we do our, we do some community building curriculum that is, that is required as well, but we know it's also important to allow a lot of flexibility for teachers to do what they love to.
Let's take a couple more questions. Go ahead, Maya.
Thank you for a very thorough and uplifting presentation. I think that all the things you're touching on at the high school feel so pertinent and relevant and important. In listening to the work you're doing around assessment, your investigation and stretching your notion about assessment, I guess I was left hungry for your narrative around it. I mean, what have you, I mean, I don't, I don't think you need to give us a lecture on what you, the brain, what the research shows about assessment, but I think that we all know that we have a lot of very stressed-out students at the high school. It's something that we're all working to change, and I don't, I'm not hungry for data right now about how are you measuring, you know, wellness right at this moment. But I guess I would have loved to hear a little bit from you as administrators, that you are putting a different emphasis around assessment, and maybe even as it ties into homework policy also. I think that in what I've read about assessment, there's a lot of research that shows that frequent, more frequent, smaller assessments are much more powerful. And I didn't see that here in black and white anywhere.
So when I was referring to formative assessment, that's what I meant.
To what?
Formative assessment, that's what I meant. Those are the smaller, more frequent assessments. Particularly World Language has been a leader around that the past couple of years with their proficiency work. That's a lot of how that's played out. So I would agree with you that if I were going to put my heart behind something, it would be in that area, and also authentic assessment. So, things that either we would see occurring in the real world, which I think we see through our senior project English class, and again, through the proficiency work. So, I mean, those would be the two areas, and I think that those are the two areas that are certainly swirling for us.
So this, these concepts are definitely being impressed upon staff and whatnot, in a way that is going to maybe not have data points that we can look at next year, but our students will feel.
I would hope so, yes.
Okay. I just felt like I wanted to hear like a tiny bit more of a nugget around that.
Yeah. That makes sense. I think we are really more in an investigatory inquiry phase right now. I mean, this is really about what are people doing, what can we learn for each other, from each other? But those are definitely a couple of the things that are very important to us, especially in the assessment group that's been working together to drive a lot of the, a lot of the professional learning. A lot of the readings we did last year were also related to both of those ideas, formative assessment, authentic assessment, and alternative assessment. And those things co-mingle. But alternative assessment are assessments that aren't, you know, your traditional 100-point paper and pen test.
Thank you very much. Can, okay, we're running a little late, but...
And unfortunately, it's kind of, I'm just trying to understand one thing, it might be really just a stupid question. You had listed that you did planners and stuff. Were there two sets of planners then, or is that the planners that the school gave out? I'm just trying to...
That's the planners that the school gave out. We've never given, so junior high, I think, gives out planners. We've never given out planners before.
So that's...
And it was a significant cost, as you can imagine, with 11, with 2,000 students.
Yep.
All right. Thank you both, thank you all, three of you, very, very much. And do you want me to hand over to you for...
Thank you, Larry, Beth, and Tina. Great job. Next on the agenda is the, one of the first of two annual reports, or opportunities, to hear from our Special Education Advisory Council. And there is a presentation, copies of the presentations were provided. Take it away.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Amanda Bailey, and I'm Chair of the Acton-Boxborough Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We have two other members of our executive board here tonight, Melissa Brown and Bill Guthline. Our mission, as always, is to work collaboratively with the district around programming matters pertaining to the safety and education of students with disabilities. But we also task ourselves with educating parents in the community about the same. That's reflected in several of our goals for this year. Inclusion has come to the fore as we look at national conversations, district initiatives like the building project, and internal practices. We have to extend this beyond the schools, however, to ensure opportunities for friendships and to increase understanding in the community. We presented on our 2017 mini-survey findings in the spring. We're highlighting communication, extended school year services, and parent education around both. We continue to work with Student Services as things arise, which can include shoring up communication between regular education, special education staff, and families. We're conducting our annual MCAS analysis, but in light of the survey issues around communication and extended school year, we want to inform parents about how to increase accountability and ways to track student progress beyond student growth percentile. And finally, we have community education and outreach focuses on topics like mental health and the IEP, transition, and extended school year programming. These are in addition to some other objectives you can find on our website. So Focus One, inclusion. Quickly, some definitions. So accessibility is the ability to physically enter and independently navigate a space, including virtual ones. Inclusion is involvement in everyday activities, including holding roles also held by those without disabilities. And adaptations or accommodations are ways of altering an environment to enable participation. So in short, access is getting in the door of the gym for the prom, inclusion is being asked to dance, and adaptation is changing the dance move so everyone can do them. To dig into inclusion a little more, we might use this graphic to think about different programs in the community, Special Olympics, or Miracle League, or the schools, like the common half-day mainstream, half-day resource room placements for kindergarten students with IEPs. These categories can be fluid, and often depending on the physical spaces where events occur, or the sensory demands of those spaces. One of the biggest barriers to inclusion is access. As part of our progress toward our goal, we presented this month to the Acton-Boxborough Family Network Board about increasing opportunities for access and inclusion through their events and programming. Parent advocacy resulted in them piloting a sensory-friendly Halloween event. We attended a feedback session with Acton Rec to begin probing the needs for accessible, inclusive, and/or adaptive programming, like Sudbury and Concord have developed. Their new space in the old senior center opens up a number of options. We've been talking about the lack of a fully accessible playground with inclusive equipment in either town, including at our schools. You wouldn't take a child without a physical disability to a playground and say, you can only swing. We're talking with Student Services, one-to-one issues around access and inclusion arise, but we also want to identify broader opportunities and encourage exploration of them. Access and inclusion are also why the building project is critically important. I know this is presented here and elsewhere. As a brief aside, the left-hand column representing the early childhood special education program Acton site should be bolded. The PAC has talked with the Acton-Boxborough Family Network Board to spread awareness for the whole project. We've approached the Acton Commission on Disabilities. We need people from both towns to utilize the provided childcare and show up on December 4th. I know you guys know this, but people are watching, for the required feasibility study and for a future vote on funding the project. Again, there may be people watching who are against funding this project for whatever reason. This is a civil rights issue. There are kids under all this who don't necessarily have the same open enrollment options that allow for full physical access and full inclusion life of the schools as a result. Others are limited in choice by where programs exist to meet their needs and are therefore slotted into older facilities. It shouldn't be that a student may not encounter until junior high a same-grade peer who moves differently through the world. Another big barrier to inclusion besides access is parents feeling empowered to ask for what their children need to be included in the school and in the community. That's what I'm doing. Last year, I shared care mapping with the committee, which was developed by a parent to illustrate service provision and care needs. This was also developed by a parent. This is the inclusion bill of rights she envisioned for her son. The right to sit with the class, to be a student and not a guest in the classroom, the experience of being a group leader, to have friends, not helpers, to learn from others and have others learn from him, and create an inclusive future with peers now. These are important conversations we need to openly continue as we look at spaces and the programs occupying them. Shifting gears, we're in the middle of drafting our annual MCAS analysis. The state has said flat out this year's test was apples to oranges compared to previous years. We're still looking district to district and internally to see how students with disabilities fared, but we want to focus this year on ways to track progress and assure accountability beyond student growth percentile. Here's a list. We continue to need parent education around the importance of specific measurable goals and ensuring that present levels of performance are documented in the IEP. I want to highlight formative and substantive testing results and student record requests. We're finding the need to keep working with regular education staff, special education staff, and administrators to make sure that these requests to have conversations with parents about progress are open and transparent. the parents about progress are open and transparent and welcomed. Progress reporting of all these things also plays into extended school year eligibility determinations, so as parents look at regression and recruitment over breaks. We'll be working on connecting families with this information and more as we continue our outreach and education efforts. This slide lists some of our ongoing work. I want to highlight we'll be having the high school transition specialist Kate Sullivan to speak in January on Acton-Boxborough-specific resources for students ages 14 to 22, and she'll be joined by a speaker from the Federation for Children with Special Needs to talk about self-determination and person center planning. So thank you for your time tonight.
Comments or questions? Yep, Bridget.
Thanks for your focus on students with disabilities and the impact that the building project can have making a difference in the way they walk through and go through their educational experience. It's really important. And I have to say, you know, the, one of the bullets that hit me the hardest was the discussion about accessible playground facilities for the younger students. That's heartbreaking. You know, it really is, and it made me feel just terrible that we don't have enough access
It's heartbreaking to see.
For younger kids, yeah. So thanks for raising that. That's really important.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item number nine, the school building committee update. Mary.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Bill and Marie to give a quick summary of the meeting with MSBA Tuesday.
Thanks, Mary. I'll start, and then Marie can jump in and correct me, but, but more importantly, add what I missed. And then, and then one thing I wanted to say before we start that, I wanted Dennis just to ask you or remind you, you know, don't talk to parents from other communities. Just want to put that out there. Okay. We, we had a, I'm pleased to report that we had a very positive and a very productive meeting with MSBA. The MSBA staff who were there representing MSBA, two of the staff members were their senior members. We also had our program coordinator in, in the meeting as well. The senior engineer who supervises the design enrollment process for MSBA actually spoke to the data that they had put together, and I would note that, that MSBA ID'd some interesting aspects of AB's enrollment, most, most importantly, related to the recent enrollment over the last couple of years. They noted that the birth rate to K ratio that we use to, to project our enrollment numbers were higher than, than, over the last two years, considerably higher than what the five-year average is, and that's the, that's the average that they use for all school districts in determining the birth to kindergarten ratio, and that also noted that the, the class-to-class or grade-to-grade ratios beyond kindergarten, so from kindergarten to grade 12, were, were really very consistent and indicated a very low level of outmigration once students migrate into our district. And, and at that point, Marie, who did just a fabulous job, a fantastic job, she was well-prepared with, with additional enrollment information that she provided to them. A lot of the information was provided ahead of time, but she had, she had a series of charts that underscored what was happening with our enrollment, especially over the last couple of years, and what those trends projected, which were frankly, a little higher than what MSBA's trends were, were showing as well. As a result of that, MSBA requested more information from us regarding the Ashton's projections. The senior engineer, Mr. Buckley, is very familiar with the work that the Ashton's have done, and I think Marie has mentioned this prior, that the Ashton's actually worked with MSBA to develop their projection model. So having the updated enrollment information from the Ashton's was really important, and I think will prove to be impactful as we move forward. So, so what MSBA did was they, they asked for, they asked for some additional information regarding the Ashton's projections, which we will be providing. They also asked for some, some floor plans related to our elementary schools and interested in, interested in, in relation to the capacity, the overcapacity issue, interested in how the new facility will help mitigate the overcapacity issues at the other schools, which translates directly into what the eventual design enrollment numbers will be from MSBA. So that was a very, that's a very good, that was, that was a very good sign. So, so the meeting resulted in a process where we'll be sending them additional information by the end of this week. They'll take the next couple of weeks to review that. We will be receiving after that a design enrollment letter from MSBA, which will outline their design enrollment numbers that they're willing to support, and, and so I would, I would tell you that, that, that it will end up having been a very productive meeting, because I think we'll be in a place, I, I project, hate to use that word, that will, because we're talking about enrollment, but I project that we will be in the place we really want to be around design enrollment. That makes sense for what our future projections look like. In addition, we had the opportunity to talk with them in clarifying the feasibility study agreement process and the timeline for starting the feasibility study. They, as we've been reporting, they have us projected to be on the board of directors' February 14th meeting to vote on, on approving the feasibility study agreement. Assuming we get the positive votes at both town meetings on December 4th, MSBA will then start putting together the feasibility study agreement document that they will forward to us, share with us, we'll review it, and we'll be ready to, to move on that once the board votes approves the agreement on February 14th. And what we, what we also clarified, which is what we, we went in believing, was that we can't officially do anything for the next step of the process until the MSBA board votes approval on February 14th. However, we certainly can after December 4th, and we will do so, put together a draft request for services document following MSBA's template for the procurement of the owner's project manager, and we'll have that ready to go for their review. So the way this works is, we put the draft together, MSBA has to review that draft document and sign off on it, and then we can start the procurement process. That works both for the owner's project manager and the, for the designer, the architectural firm. We have to procure the services of the OPM first, and then we can go forward and secure the services of the architectural firm. So we'll be all ready to go, and we'll send them, the board meets at 10:00 a.m. on, on Thursday, February 14th. We'll get back to Acton-Boxborough at around 12:30, and we will send them the draft of the RFS on February 14th at 1:00 p.m. So, so we'll be geared up and ready to go. Wanted to add anything, Marie?
Do you have a question?
Well, just a few things. Can we add, Amanda's presentation was wonderful. Is there something that we can add to our presentation, either that we're giving out to the community at the forums, I don't know how many we have left, or at the meeting that talks about the accessibility issue? I mean, that, it, I, I mean, I know I've seen it in the forum, but I don't know if it's been stated as, as beautifully as she put it in that presentation. That, I mean, that's huge, which is the consistency and the access to, and it's, it's students, families, everybody that has access to buildings that people just don't have now, playgrounds, buildings, everything, and it, it's, it's not as weighted as it should be in, in a lot of the presentations.
Do you want to toss that in, because it's been, it's been a huge part of the presentation.
Yeah. I, I do think it's a big part of the presentation, although I thought some of Amanda's language was more moving, so I wrote some things down, and I, it actually made me think of making sure when we go to special town meeting, we'll have many fewer slides, but that will remain a slide unto itself. So I think, I don't know if you want to add anything.
And just, the forum that you went to was before the video, and the video, 50% of the video is about accessibility, and it really highlights it, and then the ones that I've done, whenever we talk about the early childhood program in the preschool, it's definitely what we emphasize.
But I also wrote down to pop the box around for the preschool, because you're entirely right about that.
I love that.
Yeah. So I just want to add a few other things. So clearly, Bill's put all the pressure on to make sure we pass this at special town meeting, and to that end, we're continuing with the forums, doing as much education as we can. We have three remaining, although we may add a fourth, but right now, it's Wednesday, November 29th at 12:00 p.m. at the Boxborough Senior and Community Center, Wednesday, November 29th at 7:00 p.m. at the Conant School, and Saturday, December 2nd at 10:00 a.m. at the Douglas School. That will include a physical tour, and anyone who wants to come for the tour, even if you've already seen the presentation, just come for the tour and leave, please join us. And then we have the new video that Marie mentioned, and that's on our website. It's, I'm hoping there's a link on our website. Yeah, it's a YouTube video that is narrated, so it's terrific. I still need to tape a session, I wrote myself a note, so as soon as I'm back from my trip, I will do that.
Mary and I will go over there next week.
Yeah, she's going to be my moral support. So I think, I think that's everything. We have the social media going that a group is doing incredibly well, so, so it's really, we need the support of the school committee to be educating their neighbors, their friends, have them come to forums, talk to them. If you think we can talk to anyone to help, talk to us and, you know, help us get that vote out, so, thank you.
Dennis.
Just real quick for Bill and Marie. Bill, and you've done this before with MSBA. I'm sure nobody walks into these meetings saying, "Hey, your enrollment is too high, you need to lower it." So you seemed cautiously optimistic. So I guess I'm wondering what was different about this particular meeting as opposed to, I mean, the last time you fed these guys some, some data.
I can tell you the difference between my two experiences in Winchester and Tuesday's meeting is that from the MSBA side, I feel, to coin, to coin a phrase, a kinder, gentler MSBA. And I'm, I'm serious. And, and what appeared to me to be a more flexible attitude around looking at enrollment numbers. So, so I was, I was impressed by that, and, and the reason that I wanted to emphasize that Joe Buckley, the senior engineer who oversees that, that area, it's the first time in now three, well, had multiple enrollment meetings in Winchester, but the first time in any meeting that there has been a senior staff member speaking to enrollment. In my experience prior, it was the, it was the demographer themselves who presented that information. So, so I was impressed by that, and impressed by the fact that all of the staff that were there at MSBA certainly were willing to listen and engage further in reviewing, in reviewing our data. We talked about what Marie mentioned, I should say, the fact that at a minimum, we're looking at schools that have, that have three sections in each grade, and they didn't blink an eye at that, frankly. And Marie said, and although, and one of them might have to have four sections, given the trends we're looking at. So, so they were very amenable to listening to that and then reviewing the additional information and then getting back to us. The other thing that I was impressed about was that there's a, there's a nuanced difference between, and what has changed with them is their hard core enrollment projection numbers for down the road. For example, building an individual school, and their projections show it should be a 360-student school versus in the past, the district's contention that it really needs to be at a minimum a 420-student school. There was a lot of work to work with them to try to come to a compromise. I sensed that this, at this meeting, there was more understanding of that, and that they've kind of moved away from that hard number, and they talk about design enrollment, which again, is a bit of a nuanced between, a bit of a nuanced difference between just a straight X number of section school versus a design enrollment can mean some different things in terms of the number of classrooms, that there's more flexibility that can be built into some of the design specs. That gives the district some flexibility for how they use space down the road, should that be required. I hope that helps.
Marie? Do you have a?
Just a question, I just have a little I can add.
Yeah, well, so just from, from what you were telling us about the meeting, I thought I heard you say that they were the ones who brought up the low level of outmigration?
Yes.
The fact that they're looking at that kind of data, that, to me, I, I'm assuming that's favorable, because that, that points to the solidity of the, of the enrollment and the permanence of, of the enrollment projections?
No, I think you're right, but, but I don't want to mislead anyone. Those were aspects that they noted, but they still do have a fairly, they, they have a process they go through, and they look at all the enrollment data, and they, and they typically build or, or process the information and come up with a design enrollment that's based on a 10-year average. So the, the difference for us is that a 10-year average, that's, that's one way to look at, you know, long-term enrollment trends, but the difference between where we were and what the projections were, both from Nezdek and the Ashton's just two years ago, and where they're trending two years later, is really very different. And that's the piece that I believe they really focused on as a result of the, the additional information that Maria put together.
So, so just to add a little bit, it was, it was just so interesting, and I think part of it was a little bit of the luck of circumstance in that the demographer was there, but she has only been with them for three months. So I suspect that Joe Buckley came for that reason, so that was maybe the luck of circumstance. And he, you know, is just so expert and really. And he, you know, is just so expert and really knew so much about our information. But they hadn't used housing sales at all. So the person I had been interacting with this whole time was their new demographer there. So the housing sales that I sent, that was not part of it. So he said, send me the housing sales. That was an example. And the fact that we did extra projections, so we, the Ashtons and the NESDEC were very comparable. Ashtons were actually a little bit higher than NESDEC's this time, when the last couple of years, it's been the opposite. But the MSBA projections were quite a bit lower. So we showed them charts like that. And then we showed them the things that had changed in the last two years and how much the projections from NESDEC and Ashtons had changed in the last two years. And so when I said Ashtons, you might know them, he was like, oh yeah, I know them. They built our model. I worked with them for years. It was that kind of thing. And then he wanted, he wants to replicate how they did the projections, and he wanted to know what variables they changed. And one of the big things was the birth, the kindergarten ratio went up much higher the last two years. And so the normal model uses a four-year average, and the Ashtons used a two-year average. And so he's going to run the model that way. And so I've been back in touch with Mary Ann and asked if there was anything else they tweaked in the model. So anyway, all those things, I think, are favorable towards, and he understood the fact that we have open enrollment and we can move kids from other schools. So part of why he didn't give us a number is he wants to see how many kids we might move from Conan into the new building to offload the overcrowding, et cetera. It's that level of, you know, expertise around our situation that's going to lead to our agreement. So, yeah, we felt good about it.
I just have to say that we're just so fortunate in this community with people like Mary Ann and Peter Ashton, who, I mean, you know, the work that they've done for us, and it's volunteer, you know, and their expertise, and Amanda and the Sped Pack folks, like just the heart that our community puts into our district, the time they give, their expertise that they give, it's just wonderful. So, you know, I just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Yes, Deanne? No, go ahead. No, absolutely.
But it leads to, you closed out the screen, and Amanda had one more slide on the screen about, oh gosh, I can't even get my code in. A potluck dinner, her last slide, just because you brought that up about the community and how much they're doing. But they, we missed their last slide, if we could just, I know, but it flashed past really fast, the annual holiday potluck and business meeting, just say the date, December 6th at 7:30 at the junior high.
I don't have any controls here.
No, I know. No, I know. It was just the luck of the draw, but just to bring it up.
They don't give me that kind of, they don't give me that kind of power up here. Okay, so I'm going to move on to Marie. This is our school calendar, next year's school calendar.
All right. This calendar for next year looks very much like the calendar for this year. You might remember, we negotiated a change, and given where Labor Day is falling, we are recommending that we have the teachers' meetings on Wednesday and Thursday, August 29th and 30th. And then the Friday before Labor Day is off for all staff. And then students start the day after Labor Day, which is September 4th next year. So it's all one day earlier, but the same sort of structure as last year. So the students would start immediately the day after Labor Day. Again, grades seven and nine start on that day, and eight, 10, 11, 12 start the next day, so that we can ease our seventh and ninth graders into the junior high and the high school. The winter break also falls pretty well in that December 24th is a Monday, no school. December 25th is a Tuesday, et cetera. And then it goes through New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, our Monday, Tuesday. And then students, everybody would return on Wednesday, January 2nd. So the day before winter break would be Friday, December 21st, returning on Wednesday, January 2nd. And then Good Friday falls within April vacation, so we save a day that way. And Yamkippur and Rosh Hashanah are during our school days, that would be no school days. And I don't think there's anything else there unusual. Do you have any questions or feedback?
Katie?
Thanks, Amy. Thanks, Marie. So I continue to be uncomfortable with the public school calendar, including religious holidays, without being fully inclusive of the diversity of our community. I understand that there's not the political will to remove religious holidays from our calendar entirely. So instead, I would like to invite members of our school community to come forward before we vote to advocate for the observance of additional holidays of significance. I know, for example, this fall, there was a petition circulating online to have Diwali off from school. When I saw it, it had well over 100 signatures. I don't believe it ever officially made it to us, but I would love for whoever started that to bring it forward. I would welcome the opportunity to bring that to a vote. And anyone else who thinks that their holiday is worthy of a day off, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Yep, Tessa?
I'm not in disagreement with you at all. I think that having this conversation, though, in looking at the, I know, well, my bigger issue is still half-days, because for me, looking at this as a former elementary school teacher, it's one thing to have religious holidays off, but when you have every single Thursday as a half-day, the choppiness of a schedule for an elementary student and an elementary teacher to get through. I mean, we don't have a full week of school, and as a wise kindergarten teacher pointed out, we never actually have a full week of school, but until the last week of September. And so, you know, on weeks when we have another day off, it's just really choppy and hard to get into a routine and everything else. And so I'm not in disagreement with you, but adding additional days off for elementary students when we already have every-day half-Thursdays makes it a really difficult schedule to teach within. If we got rid of those, you can have as many religious holidays as you want, as far as I'm concerned. But that's my thought.
I think that there's a lot of, there's better cohesion with this new schedule, and I like what we worked out with the ABA for the start of school. So that looks great to me. I'm curious about the November 6th, no, yeah, the professional day, November 6th, much like this year. Why can't we have that professional day on a Thursday when half the schools are already out?
So we do it on election day because we have major elections in two of our, three of our schools. So it's not, it's pretty difficult to run school on a big election day. A year like this year, we could have done it, but next year, it won't be like that.
But maybe we could look at it for the following year, because that would be an off-election year. Deanne?
I have to say, from what I've heard from a lot of community members, this year was a lot less choppy. And I appreciate what you guys did, which was the cohesiveness of the junior high and high school actually being aligned with the elementary school. I think that made a huge difference, right? I mean, we're doing conferences, we're doing everything, we're focusing on Thursdays, and there is very little choppiness on this schedule. We have the half-day Thursdays, that's part of our contract, you know, that's where we go. No, no, I'm just saying, so we need to just move on from that. And I think compared to other years, I think that the schedule that we had this year was unbelievably smooth, it felt like, because, yeah, we have a few days that we're missing off in September, that they're not full-day weeks, but everybody's conferences and everything seems to fall on these Thursdays, which just makes, you know, when you have a high school or a junior high and an elementary school kid, before you had some days off here, you know, half-days for these kids, half-days, and everybody's kind of on that same schedule. So, I mean, I really appreciate where you've moved this schedule, this calendar. I think it's just been much better this year than in the past. And we're getting out, you know, God knows if we don't have any snowstorms, but June 18th, which is probably earlier than most schools in Massachusetts.
Okay, so this is a first read. We will take this up again at our December 14th meeting. December 14th is the next meeting, yes, the full school committee meeting. We have other things coming in between, but yes. Okay, so subcommittee reports. Bridgette?
Budget Subcommittee met yesterday at 7:30. We went over, just followed up on fiscal year 18, budget year-to-date, fiscal 19, budget. We talked about capital planning a little bit more in terms of the medium-term projects. We had a building project update, and then we discussed the possibility of implementing purchase cards in the district, which are sort of a hybrid between credit cards and debit cards for staff and so forth to use for travel purchases and other smaller purchases. So that'll be coming probably to the school committee as a whole. And our next meeting is going to be on Friday, December 8th at 7:30 in the morning.
Okay, so moving on to policy. I think, Dawn, are you taking the first one?
No.
Oh, you have a question? Comment? No, what have I missed?
No, I think Deb is going to.
Oh, Deb is.
First part of the policy Subcommittee, and Maya's.
Maya's going to do the rest, right? Okay. Sorry. I'll do the first one. Hi. So this is a statement for procedure JBR, and I think in your packet, the next document is just listed as exhibit, but that would be JBRE, so the exhibit that goes along with the procedure. These two documents were created in response to our principals requesting additional guidance to support students who are transitioning, who are transgender and/or gender non-conforming. The school committee policy Subcommittee reviewed these documents at its October meeting. So the procedures serve to provide our school-based teams with a process to follow when a student indicates they are transitioning or transgender. As our district leadership group created these forms, we worked really closely to get feedback and input from our own counselors, our nurses, our physical education and health staff, and our school principals. We also reached out to other colleagues in the field, to legal counsel, and to a school leader in Massachusetts who is transgender, to provide us with some additional feedback and some guidance. Once these procedures and the exhibit are shared with the school committee tonight, we plan to share them with all of our teachers, and they'll also be posted on our policy website. Additionally, the letter that the superintendent sends annually to fifth and sixth-grade parents, this usually happens in December, about the human growth and development units in fifth and sixth grade, will be updated to reflect that we will not be separating students by gender for these instructional units, which is now consistent with the revised procedures. So we want to make you aware of that. If you have any questions. Mary?
I just want to say, I really appreciated seeing this. I thought it was incredibly thoughtful and respectful of all people, and I thought it was really great procedure, so thank you.
All right. I just had a question, and it's kind of related to the program versus plan clarification that we had last meeting. And I noticed in JBR, there's the term "plan," and I'm wondering if we should be using the term "program"?
Good question. The word "program" was used intentionally in the policy that we looked at last time, because in the word IEP, the P is not "plan," it's actually "program" in the federal language. So in this case, there's really no federal, actually, I think most of the federal guidelines around this were actually rescinded recently. And so what we're left with are pieces in Massachusetts. We wanted a consistent term to use in this particular document about the exhibit, which is actually the plan for these students. Does that help?
Okay. Yep, Bridgette?
I agree with Mary. I think this is really, really well done and really thoughtful. I wonder, though, was there any discussion about sharing this more broadly, other than just putting it on our website and talking about it at the meeting tonight and sending? So you're going to discuss in the letter that you send to fifth and sixth graders, no longer separating classes by gender, but in terms of this procedure or this policy, I mean, we haven't had anything like this before. And I just wonder if a broader opportunity for the community to see it is worthwhile, appropriate? I don't know. I just think it's really well done.
Thank you, Bridgette. It is, in fact, very well done. A lot of work and thought went into the creation of these administrative regulations. That's something I think internally, we can talk about, the appropriateness of doing that. Certainly, they need to be posted in our policy manual, along with file JB, but that's something we can talk about further internally, to think about how we might do that.
I know in the elementary school, I think a few years ago, whatever, we tried to do the educational training, mixed, you know, not separated, and there were some issues because kids didn't feel comfortable in those grades talking or asking questions. So we should have some kind of, you know, before we hit the presentations, or I don't even know what schools have already done them, just because it did create a bit of an uproar at the time, and we don't want to hit the same thing.
Yeah, so no one's done them yet this year. They happened in the spring. That's why the letters go out in December, so that parents have the opportunity to opt out. My recollection was that the students weren't necessarily having the issues. There were some adults that had some concerns about how students were feeling in the classrooms. And we are going to ask students for feedback. So that's one of the things that we're going to do, is to ask students how they felt in that inclusive environment, just so that we can tweak and we can better support them in that way, so.
My daughter was in one of those groups, and she said none of the girls would speak because they all felt uncomfortable. Just, so just, I don't know where information gets, and maybe that was just that subgroup of kids, but they, I know that they were uncomfortable, and it was kind of like, well, just, you know, I was like, just deal with it. But it's something that needs to be out there and maybe talked over with the children before they hit that, just because there's an uncomfortableness in fifth and sixth grade about, you know, first, what's happening to themselves, and then discussing it because, you know, they're each laughing at each other, unfortunately, in the groups.
Yeah, so that's a great question. We talked to a couple other districts who, because we surveyed, we sent it out through the superintendent list serve, just to get a sense of what other districts were doing throughout Massachusetts. Twenty-five districts responded, and it was evenly split. Thirteen districts separate and 12 districts keep students together. A couple of the districts who responded where they keep students together, what they actually found over time was that students behave better, they're more mature. So it might be an initial piece. And I know Dave James is here tonight, he's our physical education and health director, and he'll be there to support teachers. We're going to meet with the fifth and sixth-grade teachers ahead of time. Nurses will be available. So we're going to provide a lot of support for teachers right from the get-go. Okay, thanks. Maya, do you want to do the next?
In policy, we are bringing to you nine policies that were only slightly revised due to regionalization. So this is a second read with a vote tonight. I will read each policy name, and if anyone wishes to discuss any of these separately, just state "hold," and we can, we'll do that, but we'll need a second. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I did not see Amanda. There, do you want to speak to the other policies? Or are you just? Okay, fine. No, go with it. Sorry. I didn't know.
Okay, so policy IKF, graduation requirements, GBJ, personnel records, GCIA, philosophy of staff development, GCJ, professional teacher status, EBB, first aid, IHB, programs for students with special education needs. And I'd like to second that. And I'd like to second that. IHBF, home or hospital instruction. JIE, pregnant or parenting students. And policy JII, student complaints and grievances.
Okay, so we've held one policy. I guess I'm looking for a motion on the other policies. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, thank you. Now we'll go back to policy IHB.
So I held it to give Amanda time to talk, so.
Well, I was actually planning on holding that, so thank you for doing that. I did think that policy Subcommittee should talk further about this policy, and it was brought to my attention, and it's interesting, because it's actually relevant to my life, that there are discrepancies between a 504 plan and an IEP plan, or an IEP, and I think that we should, we haven't had a chance to meet a policy of, you know, very much lately, and I think that we ought to look at that separately and consider whether we have strong enough distinction in language around, you know, kids who have a 504 versus IEP. And I'm not suggesting that I understand the issues fully or the law fully right now, but I really would like to look at that further, because my own kid is on a 504, which was a struggle to get, and, you know, I really see that we might need more clarity around this, and thus, I recommend holding it, discussing it further at policy.
So in case any non-career academics or parents of kids with disabilities are in the room, the difference between a 504 plan and IEPs. So Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act of 1973 is part of federal civil rights law to stop discrimination against people with disabilities. 504 plans under this law provide and guarantee accommodations for students with disabilities. If I have short stature, and I need to box under my feet at my desk, faucet extensions, that's a 504 plan. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is a federal special education law for children with disabilities. This is where we get individualized education programs to ensure specialized instruction, social skills instruction for students on the autism spectrum. If a student with an IEP also needs accommodations, these are included, okay? This policy has merged both pieces of legislation into one. That's fine, but the policy name "programs for students with special education needs" and the language therein are IEP-centered. It does not use the phrase "504 plans." It does not make clear how 504 plans are distinct from the District Curriculum Accommodation Plan or General Accommodations for All Students, and neglects to state 504s would be in writing. Some districts have two distinct policies around IEPs and 504s, Lexington among them. Others use a blanket "will follow all the law's statement." I please encourage you to hold voting until the policy Subcommittee has a chance to reconvene and discuss.
Thanks. So last time, we talked about this a little bit, and Amanda's totally right around the legal pieces. What I want to make sure that we reiterate in this case is that students who have IEPs are also protected under 504, but it doesn't go both ways. So, you know, IDEA is bigger. 504 sits over here, you can have a 504 by yourself, but both of them are together. This, from my understanding around this particular law, because it's 71B, which is very specific to special education here, yeah, is, we have a mandate to speak to special education, which is not 504, even though it includes 504, but they're different. So, I think that we certainly can have more conversation. I think that what probably makes sense is to look at some of the Lexington policies and think about whether or not we need two separate policies. I think the goal of this one is specific to students who have special education needs, which we accomplish through an IEP versus a 504, so.
Okay, so we're gonna hold that policy until a future date, when the policy Subcommittee can take a look at it. Okay, moving on to school committee member reports. Is there anything that you would like to speak to? Yes, Mary?
So HIT, Health Insurance Trust, met this morning. I can't remember if we said this at the last meeting, but the guidance is a 0% increase for the budgets at this time. We will, well, we'd like to vote a rate in January. We're not sure if, you know, what we want is enough data to know where we should be going, so we may do a preliminary rate in January, and then in February, we're gonna figure out in January how the data are and when we can do it, so we can get it as soon as possible for our final budget. But we're comfortable with going in at a 0% increase at this time.
Right. Yep.
Didn't you come in last year at 0%?
Yes, we did. We've just had very favorable history in relation to what's coming in and what's going out. You know, we've talked about that today, like, what's behind some of that. There have been retirements with new teachers coming in. It could be some of that. We talked about there's some health and wellness programs going on. It could be related to some of that, but we've had basically some pretty favorable experience. But we always have to understand, these kinds of things are cyclical, and so you can't bank on good years always, and so you can't take too aggressive of an action, because then you get in a tight situation. And what you want to do is, if something changes, be able to get through the rest of the year with where you are and not have to have a rate change during the year. We want it to be built into the budget, so. I don't know if you want to add anything, Marie?
Yeah, sure. The, I just want to remind the committee that working with all of the unions for the town and the schools, the town of Acton and the regional school district, we made some plan design changes that include taking on a deductible with our HMOs for the first time, and that provides savings. And we're also introducing a health savings account, an HSA, and so all of that is helpful in containing costs related to health insurance, and the, Mary's right, there have been some very favorable years, which have led to a healthy fund balance. So we did have 0% in this year's budget, and we're potentially looking at 0% for next year, which is great for the employees and great for the district, and it really has a lot to do with collaboration and plan design and working together, and so we're, and I wanted to add that we also met with all eight unions from the town and the schools last week to talk through all the details around the health savings accounts. And it's a pretty exciting move and shift that could be good, again, for everybody, and we'll be rolling those out. We'll have sessions for employees in March to learn a lot about them, and they'll go into effect in July. So the preliminary guidance is a 0% increase for the HMO, and 18% below that for the HSA, which is a high deductible plan. So the HSA has a $3,000 deductible. The district pays half of that, $1,500 deductible for a family plan. And then the HMO will have a $750 deductible for a family plan, $250 deductible for an individual plan. So there are changes there that are helping to contain, along with a lot of the health initiatives that we have.
Dennis?
So, I mean, we might be the only employer that has healthcare that's not getting raised this year, so. And I remember four years ago, four, five years ago, we had a very, very small increase, and the next year, we got whacked. And we were looking at each other from a budgeting perspective, going, um, how are we gonna deal with this? So are we, yeah, it was huge. So are we gonna put ourselves in a position where, and it might not be next year, Marie, but are we gonna put ourselves in a position where, you know, in three years from now, whoever the new superintendent is, is gonna be sitting there having to deal with a massive increase?
I don't think we are. I mean, that's what we're trying to be careful to not get in that situation. As Marie said, we have very healthy fund balance, and so, you know, that's part of, it's the kind of thing where we can't, if we raise rates, we're getting up against the cap of where the fund balance really should be, and so we're trying to kind of walk that walk. It's the problem of, we don't have the crystal ball, though. We don't know exactly what's gonna happen, and just like our budgets, we're building this on data that's 18 months out, you know, and so we do our best, but we are being careful, and I don't think that we'll get in that situation, but we are aware of it. You know, we know that happened, and so, I think, I actually think our fund balance is as high as it is because the members on the committee who were there when that happened felt like we couldn't get it high enough for a while, but it's high enough, so.
Okay, thanks.
Agenda item number 13, donations to our schools. There are two, and both are grants. The first grant is for $5,000 to the high school for the purpose of providing afternoon library coverage. These grants are being provided by the Acton-Boxborough Regional PTSO. We will ask you to vote on these separately, but the second grant is for $3,750 from the AB Region PTSO for the purpose of offsetting the cost for the 2017-18 school year student handbooks. So in terms of the first grant, I have a recommended motion to accept with gratitude the $5,000 grant from the Acton-Boxborough Regional PTSO to the high school for the purpose of providing afternoon library coverage.
Again, I'm sorry, I know I'm a pain in the neck at this meeting, but I guess I want to understand more with, I mean, we should accept this, of course, but why are we paying, why is the PTO paying for library hours? I'm trying to understand the hours. I know kids have to stay after school, well, first, some kids just want to use the library, some kids have to stay there waiting for sports, like, there's, so what does our district pay for in regards to library time, and then what's in over for, I mean, do we only pay until the end of school, and then the PTO covers any time after that? What is the library time, hours, that we're paying for versus the PTO? It just seems like an odd cost for a PTO to be paying for library hours. A district should be providing library.
So, that's a reasonable question.
This is only exams?
Sorry. So my understanding is that this is a grant that's been given for a number of years.
And I only bring it up because, again, I mean, I know the junior high and high school PTO funds are getting low, and these are two huge costs that just seem, I'm just asking the question of, what does our district provide when it comes to after-school library hours?
My experience, my experience is typically, the school libraries are open during school hours. So the opportunity to provide coverage so that students can use the high school library beyond school hours.
So we certainly pay for the librarian for the school day, and that the junior high and the high school are both available for students after school. And I know at the junior high, it's till 5:00. At the high school, it's until 5:00 as well, I think. We're paying for definitely the junior high, and I think we're paying for a good portion of the high school, but I would have to double-check that. This is for $5,000. I think a chunk of it was because during mid-years, we wanted to make the library available for those new schedules where kids are coming in late and starting early, and so on and so forth. So it's something that the PTO collaborated with the high school leadership about that would be helpful. The regional PTSO is giving money for a couple different things, and the second one is in this packet as well. It's not like the elementary, go ahead, what?
I did find a detail that Karen Reeser sent about the high school part.
Can you take the microphone, Chris?
I'm sorry. So the high school is a stipend to staff and employees for monitoring the high school library. That's after-school, Monday to Thursday, 3:30 to 5:00, from September 11th to June 15th. The library is also open extra hours during exam times, so that's what the high school chunk funds.
I mean, I want to approve it. I just, I would just like that we start thinking about library hours that are covered by the district. That's all. I mean, we should approve it, and we need to approve it. I just, you know.
So Dan, I'm going to take your comments as a request for the administration, as we're in the process of developing the budget, to consider including the cost of that service in the budget. That's how I'm taking your question. Is that fair? Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion? It's been seconded. Any more comment? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. Okay, so now.
So a recommended motion for the second grant is along similar lines to accept with gratitude, the $3,750 grant from the Acton-Boxborough Regional PTSO to the junior high school for the purpose of offsetting the cost of the 2017-2018 student handbooks. If you have a question, what is the total cost, and how much is this offsetting? I do not have the answer for that, sorry. I will endeavor with these grants, experiences now twice, to have more detailed information available for you in the future as to what these grants are for.
So moved? All those in favor? All those in favor?
Opposed? Abstentions, sorry. Thank you very, yes, Bridgette.
Thanks. This is a handbook question, and I voted in favor. But we talked at one point about handbooks for all of the schools. I don't know if, in policy, I think that was last year, but I don't know that it's required that we have, that each school have a handbook, and I just wonder where this particular handbook falls in the realm of, does it need to have a handbook or not? And are we really publishing these, or can't we publish them online? And does it cost as much money? And it doesn't have to be answered tonight, I'm just throwing that out there as a handbook question.
You know, I, maybe I read this wrong. I took the handbook to mean the planner.
Oh, I thought it said handbook.
I think it's the planner that the kids get.
We put planner. That's hard to identify.
Yeah, yeah.
It says handbook.
It does say handbook.
And I was, I assumed it was the planner, but they didn't have.
Is it the handbook or the planner?
Let me clarify that. On the memo that came from Andrew Shen, it does say student plan books. That's my mistake. I was saying handbooks. It's student plan books. Boy, I'm not doing well tonight, am I, Dennis? Boy.
It's your last year.
Don't sign me up.
Forget the question I asked, please.
But can we say there is good news? Every school has a handbook, and they are all online? And Dawn made them all consistent this summer.
So we have a couple of FYIs. Do you want to do them?
In your packet is some information regarding babysitting for special-town meetings, so we want to make sure that all Acton and Boxborough parents, to be aware of that, and that information will be sent out. Some information on the ongoing family learning series. And then in terms of next meetings, at this point, there is not a need to have a regularly-scheduled meeting on November 30th, but what I would propose is that we make a final decision at the end of the meeting on Monday night, November 20th, just in case there is some work that the committee might need to do, or some decisions the committee might need to make related to the superintendent search, that we take advantage of at least having that meeting already in the calendar, and having just whatever length of time it takes to deal with whatever issue there might be. So we'll know that on November 20th.
So I'm just gonna put a plug in to really take a look at your packets and think about your questions, and hopefully we can deal with whatever we need to deal with, so that we don't have to have that meeting on November the 30th. So let's try to.
so that we don't have to have that meeting on November the 30th. So let's try to come prepared with the questions that we have. Yes, Dawn?
I also put in front of you tonight, there's a red flyer that Deb Garfield, who's the director of the Elliott Center Inc., our mental health center locally, with the Healthy Teen Initiative grant, one of the big pieces, and the AB Cares Coalition is working through this as well. They've done a few private, sort of closed, trainings to sort of get our trainers up and ready with folks who are in the field, who are professionals. And now we're going to be working to do, hopefully, monthly suicide prevention trainings under the QPR, which is Question, Persuade, Refer, so that folks can be sort of aware of mental health issues that exist around them. So the first one that they're offering that's public is Tuesday, December 5th, from 7:00 to 9:00 at the Gallery at Village Works. Hopefully, we'll see some of you there. And we're going to be hosting our first one in district the same week at the junior high that we're doing the SOS screenings with grade seven. So trying to pair that with families to invite them in to help, hopefully, understand what their kids are learning, and also some strategies for themselves. So hopefully, you'll spread the word on that.
Okay, thank you. Now I'd like to make a motion to convene an executive session under Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the district's litigation position. Whoa, 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 whoa. Sorry, I missed a whole section here. Hold on. Sorry. To consider the approval and release of the, wait, you had crossed it out, this section. You're just inserting that. Okay. I'm sorry, Beth. Okay, I'm going to start over. Oh, God, between Beth and Bill, I don't know how we get things done here. So is there a motion to convene an executive session to consider the approval and release of the minutes and related materials from the October 19th, 2017 executive session in accordance with purpose, in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as the chair hereby declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the district's litigating position. The litigation discussed in the minutes involves two complaints under the open meeting law filed on August 10th, 2017, and threatened claims against the committee for defamation. I'm waiting for a motion. Yep, sorry. Mary moved, Paul seconded. Maya? Yes. We will return to open session to, only for the purposes of adjourning. Thank you.